On June twenty-third of planning commission, the start of the plan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call please, young lady.
Deborah Addy here. Mark Brochard.
Here.
Chris Hilton, Hilton.
Excused.
Chris Holcomb.
Excused.
Tom Cozel.
Here.
Robert Muesling.
Here.
Whitey Simon.
Here.
Kathy Switzer.
Excused.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. I look for a motion to approve either the agenda or amendments to agenda.
I'll make a move, I'll make a motion to approve the amendments to the agenda.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
I'm rusty, Whitey, I'm rusty.
Now we look for the approval of the minutes of the last meeting, which was, uh...
I give you a vote.
Real call? Real call?
Not real call.
I'm going to recuse myself from this, since I was not here.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That brings us to new business. The first item A on the agenda is a rezoning application for ninety-three oh-three Stone Road from C-two to C-three. Do you have anything to tell us about that, young man?
Good evening. Tonight is just the schedule of the date for the public hearing. They're looking, it's approximately point-six-seven acres of property. They're looking for C-two to C-three. C-three would be your least restrictive commercial district. I do not see anywhere on the application their intent of what they want to do, though, so...
There are essentially some extensions to C-one, C-two that add a few businesses to being allowed in the C.
It usually adds like automotive and more outdoor sales, those kind of things, at least restrictive, yes.
I think that's what we were questioning him on last time, when he was...
Yes, yes, we did.
You know, whether he's gonna be able to sell, what is the parking, everything else.
So if we would like to do anything at all about that, we need to schedule conceivably a public hearing on July twenty-eighth. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing on July twenty-eighth for, uh... What's it, ninety-three oh-three?
Right.
Ninety-three oh-three Stone Road rezoning. C-one, C-two to C-three.
Uh, excuse me, I just, just for the record, could you state your name and, uh...
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. I'm Steve Casson, I'm your planning consultant.
Thank you.
Thank you. You've heard the motion? You all understand it?
Need a second, I think.
I'll second it.
Debbie, second. Roll call, vote.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling.
Yes.
Chris Hilton, not here. Whitey Simon.
Yes.
Deborah Addy, yes. Mark?
Yes.
Motion passes. That brings us to the second item under new business, namely B, which is a public hearing, the rezoning of C-three to R-one of the South Channel property. The properties are JPC two-zero-twenty-one dash zero-zero-four, seventy-four dash fourteen, eight-four-seven, zero-four, one-five, dash triple-zero. JPC twenty-twenty-one dash zero-zero-five, seventy-four dash fourteen dash eight-four-seven, zero-three-nine-eight, dash triple-zero. And JPC two-zero-two-one, zero-zero-seven, seventy-four, fourteen, eight-four-seven, zero-three-nine-seven, dash zero-zero. Before we begin the public hearing, I would like to repeat and remind you of the public hearing, public comment rules. All comments must be made through the chairperson. Comments directed to the applicant from the audience are prohibited. Individuals wishing to speak have time limits: three, three minutes for each member of the general public, and six minutes for exposed, the spokesperson for a larger group, e.g. subdivision association, condo association, business group, and similar groups. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to sign the sign-in sheet provided. However, anyone wishing to speak will be given the opportunity. Each individual may be allowed to speak once. It will be the chairperson's decision as to whether rebuttal comments will be allowed. Citizens may appoint a spokesperson to represent those who agree on a point of view. And finally, public comments on a specific public hearing request should be made during the public hearing for that item. I ask you again, do you have some comments for us regarding the rezoning from C...
Good evening again. I did review the requests for rezoning from C-three general business to R-one. I have to say it's very unique. I've been doing this a long time, and very seldom we ever get requests that commercial go back to residential. But that's this case. They're seeking rezoning of three parcels, total of eleven-point-four-two acres. Uh, my, my review shows a map of where those parcels are located. Uh, surrounding areas on the north side, it's zoned, uh, single-family, R-one. Single-family is used for, uh, it's actually the water, part water, it's part single-family residential. On the east side, it's also zoned, R-one, single-family. Uh, property for the most part is vacant, although there are some single-family homes in the distance. On the south side, it's also zoned, single-family, and also the C-three, uh, general business. And on the west side, it's also zoned, R-one, and it's occupied by the South Channel Yacht Club. The review is the applicant is requesting to rezone the property, as I stated. Uh, specific purpose, purpose, although not entirely identified, but I believe it's to provide, uh, single-family homes in that area. The request is consistent with the, uh, pattern of development in the area. The master plan deviates a little bit from the, uh, from the use in the area. The master plan actually shows it as, uh, commercial, but that was due to the fact that it was anticipated that the South Channel Yacht Club would, would expand, uh, and develop on that property. Uh, I have no objection to the rezoning. In fact, I recommend approval.
Thank you, sir. With that, we're open for public comments when you come to the podium. And, uh, please use the microphone, state your name, and give us your statement.
Would you like copies of what we're gonna talk about?
Are they different from the ones that were in the... Well, you can do as you copy, makes it easy. Thank you.
To the board, this is Ken Jaylee from Harson's Island. Um, I represent a group of seven of us, all of which are adjacent property owners, except one who also has a, uh, interest in the wildlife and the, in the, the surrounding, uh, water environment. So, we have some, um, concerns, but maybe if these concerns are met, might be an acceptable program. But we're, we're, we now learned that it's eleven-point-four-two acres, and so I have a question about that. And that is, how many homes could be built under R-one in eleven-point-four-two acres legally? If it's rezoned, it could potentially be how many total buildings? Is there anyone here who can tell me?
It would depend on the layout. Mr. Chairman, may I respond?
Certainly, please do.
Uh, it would depend on the layout of the lots, but I, I, give or take ten to fifteen.
Okay, so, if we had as many as fifteen eventually there at some point in time, maybe after I'm dead and gone, but if we had fifteen, it would, normally houses have about three and a half people, residents per house. So if you take that number and you multiply that out, you know, that's a, um, a small number. But we all know that on Harson's Island, especially in the warm weather, that people gather at everyone else's house. Everyone has a footprint on the water, invites someone else, so the, the population at least doubles every weekend. I'm there, I know. And so we also know that this, uh, particular area, which is adjacent to the Little Muskmoot Bay, is one of the most highly-used and trafficked areas, more by boat than by other means, but also by auto and by, uh, by people on foot, kayak, every means, swimming, they even swim through, through this area every warm weekend in the summer. So the, the number of people is very intense. Um, right now, we have no water or sewage, um, facilities down there. This project, if it were, um, started or approved, eventually could generate an awful lot of, um, township revenue on, on tax-based money, which could be used for the, the things that we need, like better infrastructure, better road, better, uh, I mean, we lost the fire department recently. I'm not saying that, that's, uh, I'm gonna advocate one way or the other, but these are services that are demanded when you add people. And especially with the number of emergencies, the number of times that siren goes past my house every weekend, on Saturday and again on Sunday. We have issues with, um, no control. I mean, people are out of control out there. There is drunken disorderly, there's, um, there's drugs being sold, and there's drugs being consumed. There's people literally dying, and we've had some deaths out there, or some other deaths close by that were related to people that left that area and immediately cracked up boats and killed others, and all in the last few years. So what's being done about that is, is a concern. And you, as a, as a board or a committee, have a, a huge responsibility and authority here to decide on it. So all I'm asking is, please, weigh all this stuff in carefully and consider what is best for our community and for those who are gonna move in, and for those who are already there. I mean, I've spent my entire life, since I was six weeks old, right in that parcel every summer, and I know what goes on, and it sure has changed. And I can tell you, I got a lot of relatives that have been there that roll over in their grave if they could see what all was going on. I mean, we have fights on the, on the road right there along Bates Drive, fisticuffs, people slugging each other, and they're not even sober enough to know what they're doing. We've had people, um, we've had nudity, lewd behavior, public urination, including on my front lawn, by people that just come by and have no regard. We have jet skis going through. That's the one pass on the Venice Highway that you can get from the South Channel to the, uh, to the bay. And so there's a lot of traffic going through there at a much higher speed than they should be. You know, in a no-egg zone, and if you request somebody standing on the front lawn, "Please, would you slow down?" It's, it's, uh, I won't tell you the obscenities that I've been abused with. And all the other people, some of them sitting right here, that have been there to hear it. So again, I'm not looking for, um, any particular decision, I'm looking for a responsible one. I'm looking for, uh, an outcome that realizes that when you bring this many more people into it, okay, we still have, um, overflows from septic tanks and things going on, and that's all that's available there. So what's gonna happen, and what are we gonna do about the enforcement? The noise, the, the, um, the music that they play, there's a few guys there that think they're a disc jockey, and so they get on the loudspeaker, and that's worse than, the music is bad enough, but two miles away, it's making my windows do this with every drumbeat. And I can feel it in my chest, and I'm trying to eat my dinner, and I don't, I don't feel that it's got the peace that it used to have. So I think, as a taxpayer, that I have some, some reason to be able to at least speak up about it. So my appeal to you is, please, do the responsible thing. We hope you will. We're counting on you to do it. I'm not saying to knock it down, but let's trade some things that, some conditions that have to happen in order to make this thing livable.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in opposition?
Good evening. Uh, my name's Dave Weber, and I'm actually one of the owners, along with, uh, my two partners here that are buying, have bought the property already. And what, and I feel bad if somebody is concerned about it, because I think, once people see what we're thinking about, I think it's gonna create a different light. I've been in the building and developing business my whole career, and like Mr. Casson said, I've never had a piece of property that I've owned go backwards and zoned. Um, doesn't exist. It's, the uses that we are going to do are severely limiting what could happen over there. If that thing stayed C-three, you could have a full-fledged mess on your hands. There are actually eighteen platted lots on this property that we're dealing with. We will probably end up with fifteen home sites. And they all have super-high-end seawall. It is extremely well taken care of. And it will be very, very quality product when we build. And I think if you go down by Colony Tower, there's a lot of homes that have boathouses, really, really high-end stuff. We own both sides of this. One is an actual C-three zoning now. The other side is marsh, that's also all platted lots. We are potentially envisioning really nice product. I don't want massive, I don't need four or five thousand footers. But people love the idea of being on the water, having a boathouse, having a place where they can have some safety for their boat, and we are envisioning extremely nice product. Can't commit to anything, because people are gonna come to us, and the market's gonna tell us what they want. But I will tell you this much, in my building life, which I've built close to a thousand homes, when you're starting lots in the north of two-hundred-thousand-dollar price range, you will have nice product. Because you can't spend that kind of money and not have a super-quality product. And I'm guessing it will quiet the area significantly if there's been people on that property partying and raising heck, because that won't happen going forward. So, um, and I also, my name, like I said, David Weber, six-one-nine-nine, thirty-one Mile Road, Washington, Michigan.
Are you on the application?
I am, yes, sir.
Thank you.
And I just, I, we're here to be really, really good neighbors, and we're here to put a really nice product out. So, and we have not met with the building officials yet, because as, when you go backwards from C-three, I just wanna be sure that we are gonna be favorably looked at, then we will figure out, 'cause we will have deed restrictions for types of construction, for the boathouses, for all of that, before we sell anything, so we can get a consistent product. Don't want a modular, next-to-a-million-dollar home. And I'm not opposed to modulars, 'cause we've built them and moved them, but at the end of the day, it's going to be a very, very quality product. So I just wanted to let everybody know where we stand.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments? No comments? In that case, let's close the public hearing at seven-twenty-three? Thank you. Commissioners, any thoughts?
Like they said, you don't get many opportunities to go from commercial to residential. I believe that would, I've lived in that area for a long time, I know exactly where you're talking about. I've seen the boats, I've seen all that, and I do believe, uh, what David's saying will calm the area down. As opposed to, who knows what you could get in there, just like he said.
Well, I also live there, and I've passed there more once, more than once, and I know Bates Drive. In fact, uh, many years ago, uh, I got the water department to put water tap, which is a test tap, not a water tap, at the base split. And so you have water at least close to that place. Uh, the only other thing I would like to tell the opposition that there are no permits issued as of yet. The building department has to look at what can and cannot be built. The health department has to determine whether the sewage can be taken care of by the size and the number of bedrooms in the buildings. So we're far, far away from having to vote on site plans for this property. That would be just my comment to set your mind at ease. And if you have not seen the platted lots, uh, there are exactly eighteen platted lots there. And at the South Channel side, there are one or two or three platted ones with a residence on there at one side. And across the street, uh, uh, across the Sulyer Highway, fifty-foot canal, you have, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven more lots that are not part of this request. So anybody else have any comment?
No, you said it all, as far as I was concerned.
Oh.
I guess mine would be kind of directed towards the planner, is if they have, if there's three property IDs, they still have to go through and get all the platted lots actually verified and divided up, correct?
That's correct.
That would be, according to the office, that would be, uh, basically the administrative thing?
Yes.
The platform are in place, so then they'll issue the addresses, and it would be... And we will have each customer, as they buy the lot, they will deal with the building department, but they will have a series of agreements in place, that it's, it's called deed restrictions, that will limit them to some of the things they can or cannot do. And what I would propose that we do is, I would put the facts together, meet with the planner first, and just to be sure we're consistent with what, that's what we do in most municipalities, so everybody knows that what we're asking for is consistent with what the municipality would like to see.
Are you planning like an association or anything like that?
Absolutely. It may not be an association, that you, you'll be able to take your own property and that, but for instance, as part of the association, you, there will be an entrance sign, there may be maintenance on that, so everybody has to know that they're part of it, if it needs to be repaired or redetiled, cleaned up, um, stuff like, you know. This is gonna be as close to single-family as you can get, is because it's already platted. It's also, there's no planning to do, it's basically applying the permit.
Yep.
But because it's such a cool piece of property, and everybody is going to be having the same goal of keeping it nice, you typically have an association to, just to address no fences and stuff like that.
Now, there's already people that have places down there, that's, they're not gonna be affected by that whatsoever.
We already improved the driveway, it was pretty nasty, we already put stone down, recreated and cleaned it up because it was tacky, and they will not have to be a part of any of it. We're not gonna have to ask them to, to chip in money, they'll just be able to drive on that approved piece of property. But I have the last thing, we wanna do is affect that somebody's already got comfortable with.
Right.
So, no, that wouldn't happen.
Yeah, we, we live down at, at the end of the property that he's speaking of, and actually we've built a road, but that's another story, and I, I don't have a problem with, um, with these gentlemen, I don't know if my mom, and Todd, Marky, and Brandon, and Fatbo and Walter live at the end of the road. Um, I'm just not sure what's going on, but I'd like to talk to them about it, and work with them, and everything sounds good. I'm, you know...
I just don't wanna be a part of any kind of a, where, what you're having them people do, I don't...
That's, we can't be...
We don't know anything at this point. I don't know what's going on, so we're gonna get together, we've spoken personally, that we're gonna meet, and, and, and find out what's going on, so we can get down the road, and, or what the plan is, so...
Well, if you satisfy all the ordinances, you'll only talk to the building department, and you won't have to come back. If you deviate from that, you'll have to come in for ovarian's or whatever, that's a site plan. And so, nothing has been set in stone, obviously, if we do decide to rezone.
Just one question, since it's already platted, could that be considered site condos, or not? Site condo development?
No, it'd be more of a single-family, I mean, single-lot development.
Yeah, that's what he's got on your single lot.
Okay.
It's C-two R, right? R-one?
C-three to R-one.
C-three to R-one.
C-three to R-one.
C-three to R-one.
I think you guys have done a great job already cleaning that place up. I was over there a couple weeks ago looking at it. It was really, really nice, on my eyes, 'cause we kept our boat there one time, and it's just fabulous what you guys have done.
Well, I don't want to speak out loud here, but, you know, I live right down the road on sixty-eight eighty Green.
That's too far away, sir, thank you.
No, it's just close enough, uh, maybe too close, but, uh, you know, and I, I, I know these fine young ladies here, and, uh, pretty much my whole life, and I've raised my family here. I had the, you know, the great, you know, uh, fortune of raising my family in Clay Township, working in Clay Township, serving the community as, you know, their phone, phone guy for thirty years. And I'm not going anywhere. You know, we're not, we're doing this because we think it's best use for the property. And we want, we wanna improve it, we wanna do the right things for everybody. We're very concerned about the environment. Anybody here who knows me, I'll, I'll...
And you are?
What's that?
And you are for the record?
Thomas Dewick, the sixty-eight eighty Green Drive. And we're in this to do, to do the right thing, and it, this is, you know, to us it makes more sense.
Gentlemen.
We're all, you know, we wanna, we wanna do everything for the area.
Any remarks? Anybody? Tom?
Ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion, if you are.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning of the South Channel. Uh, according to the, uh, survey of record, um, C-three to R-one.
I'll second that.
Anything else? Roll call. Roll call, please.
Whitey Simon.
Yes.
Deborah Addy, yes. Mark Brochard.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, we, uh, need to stamp and have the applicant sign three copies. You get one, we keep one, and it goes to the building department, right?
Yep. You need mine?
Use your phone or wave it.
Mr. Chairman, this is a rezoning, this goes to the township board.
Oh.
This is a rezoning?
Yes.
This goes directly to the township board now. There's nothing to be stamped.
You don't have to?
No, not for, not for a rezoning.
In that case, modify the motion, then it goes to the board. Thank you.
Sure.
I'm in the motion to send it to the board.
Yep. I'm in the motion to ascend it to the township board.
Thank you.
And, uh, also, the gentleman that, who was the, uh...
The commercial there is almost like spot zoning, you know, it'd be good to get rid of that. It's almost like spot zoning.
Yeah, and, excuse me, before the gentleman in the blue shirt leaves.
Dave?
Blue shirt.
Sir?
Ken?
Just to let you know, I'll be, uh, I'll be presenting your, uh, remarks to the township board. I'm the board representative, and, uh, we'll, we'll discuss that and make sure that, when they do do the building and everything, I'm gonna show these all these into a couple, okay?
And that enforcement issue, that's not us, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
We've heard it before.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I know what you're talking about, yeah. Yeah. And you know, that's a huge expense to the township, to watch those people that don't even live here or have any stake in anything. Yeah. Yeah, it is. I agree.
You ought to live a little further up. We got the same problem.
If I have it.
Next thing, uh, uh, the agenda...
Yeah, here, take this.
Is unfinished business.
This one?
Take it. We have no unfinished, unfinished business. Next thing is the planning consultants. Next thing is the planning consultants report. You've got some good news, bad news, or indifferent?
I got some new, I mean, the Airbnbs.
Yes.
Still at the state level, they're being reviewed by the Senate and the House right now. They're looking like they may be taking control away from local government.
I've heard that, that's not good.
The Michigan Township Association, the Michigan Municipal League are strongly against that, so they're fighting it, but the real estate lobby is pretty big, so stay tuned.
That's the money behind it.
The real estate lobby, does that imply that there are many people that want to invest in those businesses?
Sure does. Mm-hmm.
A lot of investors out there, they're willing to purchase asking price for the homes and turn them into those types of units, so.
So, it's, we're, we're watching it.
It's a double-edged sword.
It's like a lot of things, the state, when something gets controversial, the state takes it alo, away from local governments, you know, mobile homes years ago, adult foster care homes, cell towers, all those types of uses, they take, you know, they have the right to take it away, because we're a creature of theirs, they enable us to do planning and zoning, and they can take those types of approval processes away, and they're looking to do that right now.
Yeah, Steve, I think the only thing we can do now is maybe find a workaround.
Yes, that's a good point. Other than maybe contact your state reps, too, but.
Well, I, I, I still don't understand how you can have a co-op with a advertising lady advertise commercial businesses in a residential home.
I agree with you, I'm totally against it, but.
And, you know, whether you like it or not, I meet other people, and the complaints are, I have a home, on one side I can have cannabis, on the other side Airbnb, and what else are you going to allow next to my house?
Yeah.
It's, and what people, a lot of times, don't recognize that the state is forcing us to allow these things.
Mm-hmm.
It has nothing to do with our attempt to maintain the picture of the community that we've had for many, many years.
You're absolutely right, right.
Thank you, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
So, do you know when they're going to be voting on that?
We, I thought they were going to vote this week, but.
Yeah.
It hasn't come, I haven't seen anything yet.
No, I haven't either, thank you. ZBA report.
At our last meeting, we had only one hearing, it was for a, no, it was for a chain-link fence going from the home all the way out to North Channel Drive. We kicked it around quite a bit, and denied it because, of course, chain-link fences aren't allowed anyways, and it would be, it would be so much nicer if it was a decorative. So we denied her. And that's, that was it.
Fences again.
Fences, yeah.
The board representatives report.
I have nothing to report concerning the planning, Commissioner.
Jeez, there was a lot of stuff on there Monday.
You want to hear about insurance?
No, thank you.
No.
Chairperson, I have no reports since I was asked to do that this morning, but I believe that things are going well, and we now have a public hearing next month again, and hopefully the building department will get our agenda filled with more than that. Other than that, I have nothing, anybody else? Where's the back page?
The other side.
No, we got, it was thirteen and fourteen, right?
No, I don't know.
Yes, there was.
Who cares?
We printed it at home.
Oh, okay, I can get that.
We have a chairperson report.
Public comments? You can add those. Are there any more public comments?
No comments yet.
Come on, please.
George Burgess, 5909 Point Trimble Road, Pearl Beach. I've been following the fencing on water from the very beginning, and I did miss the May 26 meeting, so I wasn't able to make my comments there, but I was looking at the minutes from the meeting on May 26, and I have a couple of questions on the, on the minutes. The first one, well, when we started this discussion about fencing on the water, the front of the property is on the road, and the rear of the property is on the water, but yet we call it waterfront fencing. And then, in fact, there's a comment here from Mr. Kason, who said that fences in waterfront front yards, so did we change the name of the yard from backyard to front yard, or is this a mistake?
No, we didn't change front yard to backyard.
Okay.
Unfortunately, the definition is that the front yard is the road yard.
Road yard, okay. Then the other comment, or the other part of the sentence, it said that fences can be, fences in the waterfront front yards can be installed forty feet from the seawall. I don't quite understand that, is that in relation to the setback, the rear setback on property? The forty feet, is it measured from the house out, or is it measured from the seawall back to the house?
That one, I believe, does state from the seawall, forty feet from the seawall.
From the high watermark.
High watermark. So.
And I think it varies in different parts of the township, too.
Like our front yards in Pearl Beach are like a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty feet, something like that. So when you say the fence can go from the seawall forty feet back, and that's, that's all the further it can go, or it can go all the way that the, the full hundred and twenty feet?
It can go to the house, towards the house, from the seawall towards the house.
Forty feet from the seawall, you can build a fence back to that, to the front yard.
That's the restricted yard space, is that forty feet?
Okay, and then, in one of the discussions my wife had with Artie, and it was on a phone call, he was saying that the fences cannot go up to the seawall and then not be enclosed, in other words, being open to the seawall so that somebody could walk over the seawall and fall into the river, that the fence had to be enclosed. And he indicated to my wife, and now, this is pretty much hearsay, because, you know, he's not here, but supposedly, it had to do with the state of Michigan saying that the fences had to be enclosed, so that people can't fall into the water from the seawall. Do you know anything about that?
If you have a boater in distress, and he comes up to that seawall, and he can't, and he's blocked by a fence, you get sued. You can't, can't do that.
Okay.
May I also suggest that, in the computer in Clay Township, if you go into the building department, ordinance 126, the update is in there for the fences, and it shows the description, it's very plain.
Okay.
And so, if you're, if you're a computer person, you can look that up.
So also, now the ordinance amendment goes to the county, and then it goes to the board?
Yes.
Okay. And is there any other public discussion about that, once it goes to the board, it just gets voted on by the board?
At the board.
At the board.
Yeah.
Public hearing.
Okay. Well, I want to thank you guys for all your work on this business about waterfront fencing, because I know there was at least four meetings that I can think of, and probably the one in May might have been the fifth meeting on it, and there was a lot of discussion, including me, I wrote a lot of letters to you guys on the board, and I appreciate all the work you did.
Just to give you an idea about that fencing, I live next door to a couple that no longer live there, they had three dogs, two or three people who visited me were bitten by shepherds, and they were forced to put up a fence. They have a nice see-through fence from one channel to a canal.
Mm-hmm.
It goes to the seawall, but they also have doors on either side, so that anybody can run through to help someone who is in need of help at their seawall.
Yeah, well, we, we don't have that available to us in Pearl Beach where a fence was installed. There is only one gate, and that would be up by the house, so that if a person was in the yard, they could exit the yard to go towards the front of the house. The fences go right to the seawall, in fact, there's even extensions that go over the seawall to prevent you from standing on the seawall and going around the fence. But in any case...